This is the Accountability and Implementation Committee meeting, board meeting. Today's date is November the twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm going to observe some comments that I want to make a little bit later on. But in the meantime, I think we have to approve our last meeting summary summaries if there's a motion for approval.
So moved.
Just second to the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's both been properly seconded. Are there any question, comments, or concern?
Is that motion, apologies, is that motion for both? There were two meeting summaries from our last AIB meeting and then also for the joint meeting. Okay.
That's a summaries. Okay.
Thank you.
No further comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Here none, the summaries are so approved. I think we have at least one speaker for today, Madam Executive Director.
Yes, we do. The Executive Director of Strong Schools Maryland, Ria Gupta. And I see she's just joined. Ria, whenever you're ready.
I don't know if my camera is working.
It is, you're fuzzy, but there you go.
Okay, we just turned off the background. Thank you all. Good afternoon, members of the Accountability and Implementation Board. My name is Ria Gupta and I'm here on behalf of Strong Schools Maryland. Thank you for your leadership and for the work you and the AIB staff continue to do. Even though this item is not on today's agenda, the December first statutory deadline for recommending a new methodology for identifying economically disadvantaged students makes it important to be clear about where things stand. How Maryland counts students living in poverty is central to whether the blueprint's equity goals work in practice. As December first approaches, there is no clarity on when this issue will be discussed or when a decision will be made. I know the board is likely thinking about this behind the scenes, but even a brief acknowledgement that the deadline may not be met along with clear next steps and timelines would bring clarity to the public. The timing matters because the consequences of inaction already in law and dire. Without an updated methodology, CEP districts and schools will have to use direct certification counts next fiscal year, and they do not collect farms forms. Those direct certification numbers are expected to drop due to those federal changes that happened in the summer that change enrollment criteria for SNAP and Medicaid and the fear among immigrant families. These shifts will shrink direct certification counts whether or not actual poverty has changed. That context is not addressed within the report submitted by the Governor's Office for Children. The models laid out raise major concerns with advocates. Each shows a large decline in students identified as living in poverty, even though national data shows no decline in child poverty in Maryland. The report also creates very many unanswered questions about how choices on thresholds and multipliers were made. With a decision this foundational, that level of uncertainty makes it very hard for the public to see how the models reflect real conditions in schools and communities. Given the statutory shift for CEP schools and districts and the instability in direct certification, a more deliberate approach would strengthen both the policy and public confidence. In the short term, it would be helpful to set a revised timeline that includes space for public discussion and for comparing models used in other states. A temporary hold harmless measure for next year's calculations would also give district stability while methodologies are refined. Longer term, Maryland can build a stronger system, and I know we can, by examining different methods like higher direct certification multipliers, expanded direct certification, and blended models that use ACS-based income tiers. These approaches appear in Maryland's own research from two thousand twenty-three and in other states' practices and could help the state measure student poverty more accurately and stay aligned with the blueprint's intent. Advocates will also be submitting a more comprehensive written comment in the coming weeks with additional concerns and recommendations, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Any further comments, Madam Executive Director?
I just would just like to say that the board will be discussing this as part of their two thousand twenty-six legislative recommendations later on the agenda. That was always, this item was part of the two thousand twenty-six legislative suggestions, and so there will be some discussion about next steps around this topic.
Thank you. Okay, we're now prepared to go unless there are additional comments are there?
No.
Okay. We're now ready to go to agenda number three, item number three, which is the Blueprint Progress Monitoring Update. Alternative, we will miss Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, I think I did just realize I don't think we did the roll call earlier. I might have missed it, but I would just say acknowledge that we have all members present.
Thank you.
And accounted for. Okay. So we wanted to, the first agenda item here is the Blueprint Progress Monitoring Update, and we wanted to start with just an overview and then update on the progress monitoring conferences and the next steps around that. And I will ask Emma Pellerin, our Accountability Director, to take over.
Thank you. We are very excited to announce that the AIB has met with all twenty-four of the state's school districts for the progress monitoring conferences. The final conference was earlier this month. And, you know, I'm sure that folks will want to weigh in here, but this has been a long but really, I think, insightful process and helpful process for monitoring blueprint progress to learn about this more at the local level and took a considerable amount of time for our members, staff, and most importantly, the LEA staff to attend and share their stories. So we want to acknowledge that and thank them all for the time that they've provided to this. AIB staff have shared individual conference summaries with LEAs to ensure their accuracy and get feedback because we want to make sure that what is being summarized is accurate. And are finalizing the summaries to be posted on the AIB website by December first. The AIB is also identifying areas of strength and opportunities for improvement to be shared with each LEA related to blueprint progress, in addition to the conference summaries, and those will be shared in the coming weeks. And AIB staff are also identifying trends across the conference discussions to share with the board in an upcoming AIB public meeting. We are working on that very diligently, in addition to the conference summaries, in addition to the feedback. So hope to get that to you as soon as possible and look forward to discussing what those trends showed us with regards to the conferences. So I think that that is it for me in terms of the updates.
What does it as soon as possible mean?
Our hope is December or January, I think, for such a product. But I just hesitate to commit to December because this is a significant amount of data to go through.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Vice Chair Kerwin has his hand up, and I just wanted to sort of open the floor if members want to, you know, share any of their reflections on the conferences.
So.
Yep.
Yes. Executive Director Heiss, did you want to add anything? Comments?
No, you go ahead.
Jump in if you were wanting to add some comments.
Nope, you go ahead.
Okay, good. Well, I would like to offer some observations. First of all, I think the, these, the, these conferences were very, from my point of view, very successful and worthwhile. It took a tremendous amount of time, staff time as well as board time because we had board members attending them. But the opportunity to just sit across the table from, with each superintendent and their staff and have, you know, a conversation and actually get to know each other better. I think it just in and of itself was, was, was very valuable. And I, and I would also say that I was heartened by the progress we're making in lots of areas. I mean, just for, for example, in the, in pillar one, the, the number of tier-one four-year-olds who are now being served in the state is truly impressive. My understanding is that we're now at eighty-five percent of all eligible tier-one children. That's remarkable. In, in these three years, we've gotten to that level. Now, we've got to expand it to tier-two and, and three-year-olds, but just the volume of tier-one four-year-olds that we're observing.
Can I interrupt you one second?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair, our public does not understand these tiers. Could someone fill that in for us?
Oh, thank you. That's, we do get caught up in this jargon, don't we? So tier-one are the children from the most needy families. I think they are children up to three hundred percent of poverty level. That's considered tier-one. So they're the lowest-income families in the state, and we're serving now eighty-five percent of all, all eligible children. And that, that at least is the best estimate we, we can make. That's truly remarkable. And, you know, we, we also learned that we're doing exceptionally well in increasing the number of National Board Certified Teachers. For the second year in a row, we were number one in teachers in the nation, not per capita or by size of state. Number one in actual number of NBCs achieved, National Board Certified, and we're number two in the number of teachers of color getting National Board certification. So I think that's another very positive thing we, we, we learned.
Who's above us on that one?
On, on the teachers of color, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna take a wild guess that it's California, but maybe one of the staff know.
I believe it is California, but we can double.
But still, I mean, think how large California is compared to us, and we're still number two in the country. But we've, and, and, and pillar three, you know, one of the, one of the mandates in the blueprint is that we have to have updated curricula, constantly looking to ensure we have best practices in place in all of our schools. And, and all of our LEAs have adopted a Science of Reading curriculum. They've been trained. We're well on our way to getting a math, math, a new math curriculum in place. We now have seven hundred, in pillar four, we've got seven hundred community schools, one in every LEA, and we've seen a significant increase in literacy at community schools. I think it was fourteen, across the community schools, a fourteen percentage point increase in third grade proficiency in the community schools. So that seems to be working. So there, there's lots to celebrate, and clearly the blueprint is already making an impact. However, there is an area where I, I, I at least have some significant concerns. At the end of the day, what really is going to matter with the blueprint is student success. And that's what this is, this is all about, student success. And so I, I, I picked one area where to measure how are our LEAs doing on student success? And that was, that is, third grade literacy. How, the percent of students who are proficient in third grade literacy. Now, the reason I picked that is we've done so much in the state on literacy. We've introduced and have in place a Science of Reading curriculum. We have approved literacy plans. We have provided professional development coaching across the state. And we've invested in literacy tutoring. There was a special, that was early part of the funding of the blueprint. We had literacy tutoring. But on this area, unfortunately, I would say we have mixed results. I did a little count, and what I, what I, what I found was that if you look at from school year twenty-one, twenty-two, three years later to school year twenty-four, twenty-five, how did our LEAs do in improving third grade literacy? And the good news is, seven of the LEAs over this period of time increased the literacy proficiency by ten points or more. That's pretty good. In a three-year period, I'd say that's, that would be excellent. Remarkably, one of the LEAs, Dorchester, increased by twenty-two percentage points. That's just remarkable. We had nine LEAs that increased over this three-year period third grade proficiency from five to nine points, which is good. It's showing some progress. And, you know, for those who are up near the top of that range, that's quite good. We had six LEAs where the increase was only between two and four points, and we had two LEAs where there was actually an actual decline, which is hard to fathom. So I, I, I think that we need to understand better, get some information from these LEAs that are not showing much progress in this area or who've actually declined. We need to get some information on why. With all that's been invested, with all of the, something's not working as it is in these other LEAs. So that, in an overall positive picture from the, the progress monitoring sessions, this is the one area of concern I have, the unevenness in the student proficiency on, on English language. And I think we need to understand better what the, what, what's not working in these LEAs where there isn't much progress.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Of you. But when you look at the numbers, that first year that you compared it, what was the number in that tier-one group in, in early childhood education? What was the number one?
Well, you mean, where, where did they start?
No, no, no. How many did we have in that first group? Because you're comparing it with those who stratched through up to the third grade. But I'm trying to figure out how many were there versus eighty-five percent now. Where were we that first?
Oh, you mean on the, on the, 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 the four-year, the preschool four-year-olds?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have to, it'll be in our dashboard, actually.
Yeah, we'll have to, we can, we can get that data for you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but it's a significant increase.
The second, the second point I want to make is that we should, and I failed to mention this before, call those two school districts back and have a much more intense discussion with them because you don't just simply note for the record the lack of progress and not emphasize the seriousness of that. And so my suggestion would be that we call both of those back and have a discussion about future efforts and how we can make some progress there. That's the only way we get to the bottom of this. So I'm gonna suggest, Madam Executive Director, we call those two back. They don't have to have the entire group there, but whomever they think could be more responsive to that discussion.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. That's what I said. We need to find out what's going on.
Well, the first thing to do is call.
Appropriate step.
Yeah, the first thing to do is call them back.
Right, exactly. Thank you for giving me a, a few moments to offer some thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, by the way. All right, any further comments? Let me, let me just emphasize another point that I wanted to make. This is incredible amount, incredible amount of work by our staff. And I also thank all of the board members who attended and participated. We had tremendous, tremendous, on some occasion, we had two and three board members actually at these sessions. Let me also thank the blueprint coordinators from the LEAs and the number of people that came out in attendance. I think as the vice chair indicated, it showed the lack of, I mean, a seriousness involved in this and how they responded with the number of people that engaged in this entire process. So my hat's off to all of the team members, our team, and well as the team at the local LEAs. We're going to call those two back for further discussion so that we can get to the bottom of this. All right, Ms. Ms. Adam, Executive Director, is anything else needed in this section?
I see Member Manko.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we had, we had talked about this a little bit during the conferences, but I would also encourage the staff, just so we have a full picture on the performance, especially around the third grade reading. When we go through looking at not just MCAT proficiency, but also the number of students that are performing at level one versus level two. Because I think it's important to note, you know, if, if we have LEAs that are not meeting the mark in terms of proficiency, you know, clearly there are conversations that we should have with them. But if we are able to dissect this a little closer, and if they have a tremendous amount of students that are moving from level one to level two, you know, then that's showing a lot of progress. It's just, you know, we, we won't have gotten to the point where we're seeing those students becoming proficient, but, you know, it's also a tremendous, you know, it's, it's, it's a tremendous accomplishment to move students from the lowest level to a medium tier, you know, on, on the route to getting them ultimately to proficiency. So just getting a fuller picture of the data as a whole, not just the proficiency level, but where students are falling across the board as it relates to performance at each of the levels.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I know we're planning to request that data if we have not already done so from MSD.
Thank you.
Member Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Executive Director. I, I do want to echo some of the, the comments that Vice Chair Kerwin made about the opportunities, the great opportunity was to kind of converse with the different LEAs and, and just in appreciation of the time that they took to prepare their, their remarks and everything. I feel like I learned a lot about many different areas of the state. Obviously, like my context is where, where I have the most information. But Maryland is a small state, but it's a very diverse state and very different realities in the different LEAs. And so I personally appreciated that opportunity to hear from districts that were very different than mine. While the vice chair mentioned third grade ELA and the third grade literacy performance, as a math teacher, I did want to, to make a couple of comments around, around the math performance. I understand that we've done a lot of investments in, in literacy, and I think it's, it's, it's justifiable to kind of focus on that now. I do want to kind of highlight that my interest moving forward in mathematics will be elevated because of all the information that is coming out now around the math policy, the new math standards, all those things. And I'm interested in hearing how the, how the state moves forward with that, all the different LEAs, and how they transform or tweak and improve math performance for students. One of the things that I, I heard across the board from the conferences I was able to attend was that people had, had really dug deep in thinking about literacy and thinking about how they're gonna make changes for their literacy programs. But I think that numeracy was an opportunity to kind of do a little bit more work, especially around like MTSS and responding to students' needs in a more regular fashion. And so I'm excited to hear more about that in the future and hopefully that that translates into increased math scores. Couple of years down the line, just as we, just as the investments in literacy kind of translated into gains for, for many of the counties, including Dorchester, like, like the vice chair mentioned, but so many others. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I'm excited for all the growth that's going to come in mathematics in the next couple of years.
Good, thank you. Any further comments in this section? Not Madam Executive Director?
No.
Okay. We're now ready to go on to agenda item four unless there's some further comments here.
Well, if we could go to the next slide, we just wanted to, you know, remind everyone about the considerations for the two thousand twenty-five release of funds. And this is the, the funds that are automatically withheld under the blueprint law from LEAs, and then the AIB must make a decision on the release of those funds each year. And by December first of each year, the AIB has to provide a warning to any LEA that is at risk of having their funds not released. And so you can see the components of consideration for two thousand twenty-five, which include progress on implementation plan and/or student performance, which we've discussed a little bit already. We also have career ladder, career counseling MOUs, which we've been dealing with for the past several years. And this year, LEAs are required to submit and have MSD approval of their comprehensive math plans, ultimately. For last year, the literacy plans were in the same consideration. And then finally, minimum school funding under, under the law and under the joint policy that was adopted by the AIB and the State Board of Education. So those are the considerations, and we would like to kind of move through and touch on each one. I did just mention the December one date, and just to ensure that the public is aware that the AIB has scheduled a special meeting on December first at 2:00 PM. It will be a virtual meeting in order to make any decisions, make decisions on any LEAs that will receive warning letters. And then if we could go to the next slide, and I will turn it back to Emma to discuss the progress monitoring data dashboards that we are very excited to share with, with everyone. Emma.
Thank you. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about the data dashboards that our data analyst, Jordan Berry, has been working so diligently on over the last few months. This has truly been a labor of love, and we really appreciate all of the time and dedication that he has put into this work. It's been a monumental task, and, you know, this is taken, it's also required the efforts of the other team members as well. On the AIB, we've gotten sought feedback from districts around what these dashboards look like, and we greatly appreciate their input. But, you know, we really want to highlight the efforts that Jordan has put into this work. So thank you so much, Jordan. I would like to also just talk through what is captured in the data dashboards. The progress monitoring dashboard, and I think that, oh, we're switching over to this. It captures different metrics related to blueprint progress. And we're going to show a sample page in a second here for what's captured in the data dashboard. This page looks at one of the metrics. This is also a aligned metric between, that was adopted by the AIB and the State Board of Education. And you can see a few key components here that we'd like to highlight. First, that you can actually filter at the state or local levels with regards to blueprint achievement. We're currently looking at the state level, and we'll go ahead and just stay there. But if you would like to look at local achievement records for, or local achievement data for each LEA, you can do that as well. Secondly, that we have the targets for the state and local levels highlighted at the top here. We also have the proficiency percentage data for different student groups going back to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year in a table on the right. And that looks at all students, students from economically disadvantaged households, multilingual learners, and students with disabilities. Um, and if you take a look at the actual bar graph, you can see that these are highlighted um as well in the bar graphs, the um proficiency rates for different student groups. Um, this looks at the state level specifically. And if you hover your cursor over the um A column, you can actually look at the um proficiency gap. Um, if there is one between different student groups versus all students. Um, so we've done that for you and that is expressed in percentage point form. We also have a definition of the proficiency gap on the right for you to refer to as well as a um. Uh, symbols and definitions um option here, because in some cases the data is suppressed. Um, that could be because less than five percent of students in, within a student group had achieved proficiency. It could be because a small group of students um were tested in a particular category, less than ten students. So in those cases, um, a asterisk is used to represent that student group. And T refers to not tested. That indicates if um no students in a category were tested. Um, and then the dashes indicate when proficiency rates between student groups can't be compared due to data suppression. Um, so in those cases, those comparisons would not be, be feasible. Um, and then PP stands for percentage point and that you'll see that when you hover over the bar graphs again. Um, in instances where you see five percent in the bar graphs, we also just want to note um that you should refer to the proficiency percentage table. Um, rather than not have any data show up. Um, we wanted to show, still show that that student group was um, you know, represented in that particular metric. But um that uh we, we um can only represent it in the bar graph, either using five percent as the um. Marker or have it not show up at all, which would not be the case. We wouldn't want to convey that no students took um that test from that student group. So. Um, if you do see that there's a five percent proficiency rate, we would just um suggest that you look at the proficiency percentage shape table, because it could be that less than five percent of students within that group achieve proficiency. Um, so we're getting really into the uh, uh, the nitty gritty here with regards to that, but um. We wanted to highlight um again, going back to the third grade growth that we've seen over the last four years with regards to third grade ELA proficiency on the MCAP. Um, you can see for all students that that has grown by almost five percent um. From forty-five point eight percent to fifty percent. That's represented in the gold bar. Um, and uh that is getting closer to the statewide target of fifty-six percent. That um is set for the end of the school year. Um, and. You know, even more notably, I think, is the growth that you see for different student groups, specifically economically, does, students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Um, that, within that same timeframe, um, that student group uh for third grade literacy. The proficiency rate increased from twenty-four point two percent to thirty-four percent. So that's a nine point eight percentage point difference. Over the course of four years. Um, and you know, I think that is uh, you know, not trying to establish any uh. Causation here if you're with research um as I'm wearing my research mask, but um, you know, that's a pretty significant jump that we're seeing. Um, and that's something to uh, to highlight. Um, in comparison to all students. Um, so wanted to show this as an example of what, what's on here on the dashboard. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, one other comment that just to make is that. An- another encouraging thing is that the gap between the low income. And the all students decre- decrease by five percentage points. So the, the achievement gap.
Mm-hmm.
On, on third grade literacy narrowed significantly over this period of time.
Yes.
Which is a really good, and you know, I, I, I think to some extent that's got to be credited to the community schools.
Mm-hmm. And we also have disaggregated that data by community schools as well, and we'll continue to work on further disaggregations in future iterations of the dashboards. Um, as well, and that's something that we're going to continue to work on. Um, just, yes.
Oh, sorry, Emma. Did you have more to say on this?
I was gonna um go back to the landing page and the.
Good, that's exactly what I was gonna ask you.
Yeah. So if you go onto the AIB website and you go to the data dashboards page, you'll see that there are different landings that you can go to for the different pillar specific metrics. This is the pillar three landing page. Um, so from this page, you can look at um dashboards related to grade three ELA proficiency. As well as grades three through eight, grade five math and grades three through eight math. These are all in alignment with the aligned metrics um that were established by AIB and the State Board of Education. Um, and all of the pillar level um metrics have their own landing page that you can go back to and you can see the metrics that belong to that.
Can we, can we go back?
To the main dashboard page or to the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go. Yeah. So this is the data dashboard page and you can see where those dashboards actually live. Um. And, and view that, those pillar specific dashboards.
Maybe you could go to pillar four, just since.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Kirwin mentioned that.
Yeah, so if we could take a look at the third grade ELA proficiency for community schools. You'll see that um this data captures student performance in community schools um for that metric. Um, and then if you hover over the bar graph, you can see the difference between um each student group uh who attend community schools versus all students who attend. Uh, or versus that student group who attend um across the district. So you can see the difference in performance, um if there is one for um community school students. Um, and moving forward, we um do hope to also um create a dashboard that would disaggregate this data further by looking at. Student performance in community schools based on the years that this community school has been active. So looking at. Student performance in community schools that have been active for up to one year. Um, more than one to three years and three years plus, because I think, um, you know, that could be some very helpful information to know. More about the impact of um the community school strategy, the longer that the school has um been in place. Um, just finally, uh, the glossary is also available here. You can see it on all the, all the dashboards. Um, it defines key terms that are present in the dashboards and we can certainly continue to add to this if there are questions that come up about. Um, specific uh terminology. Um, and uh. It's currently two pages and we expect to add more. Any questions about this so far?
I recognize any?
I do not see any. Great. Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item um is career counseling. I'm sorry, career ladder. And um for that, I will um ask um. Rachel Amstutz and, oh, sorry, no, it's me, uh, and, and Libby. Uh, is gonna, um, Libby Diamond has been uh working um extremely hard on working with the LEAs to move um. Support them uh in getting their career ladders um to the place where they can be recommended for approval. Libby.
Thank you, Executive Director Heiss. Good afternoon, AIB members. Um. Today, I'm really excited to hopefully present fourteen um career ladders for board approval. Um, I do want to acknowledge the LEAs and their hard work, um, and their attention and their commitment and responsiveness to our feedback. Um, that really shows a commitment to that, developing these career ladders. So um, so thank you to LEAs for that. Um, as of today, we had five career ladders that have been approved. Today, I'm going to um present fourteen for recommended approval. We have two LEAs that are working on some final revision requests from AIB staff and we have three LEAs. Who are still in negotiation with the bargaining unit. And we have approved all level four pilots. I am optimistic. Yep, go ahead.
Go through each one in each category.
Sure. Can you, I'm, I'm sorry.
By name.
Sure. So you'd like to know for the fourteen that I'm going to bring for approval today?
I know what they are. I wanna, I wanna list it by name.
Do we have a, don't we have a slide for that?
Yes, yes. Okay, so these are the um fourteen LEAs. That we are recommending their twenty twenty-five career ladders um for board approval today. Allegheny County, Baltimore County, Calver County, Carroll County, Cecil County, Frederick County, Garrett County, Hartford. County, excuse me, there's an error on the screen. Queen Anne's County, Somerset County, Talbot County, Washington County, Wacomiko County and Worcester County.
Is it Hartford?
Yes, Hartford's at the very top on the, the second column.
Okay.
And then if you go back to the chart for me, AIB staff. Um, two LEAs who are working on final revisions with AIB staff are Montgomery County and um St. Mary's.
Okay.
And three LEAs that are still working with their bargaining units are Baltimore City, Howard and Prince George's County.
Okay, when you say working with the bargaining unit, what do you mean?
Working to come um to final agreements on their um twenty twenty-five career ladders.
Have they submitted anything or just indicated that they are near completion or what?
Great question. Um, so I have. The LEAs themselves have submitted um draft career ladder plans that AI bet, AIB staff have reviewed and provided some content feedback to. Um, and, but they are, they have verbally acknowledged that they are still working on final um nego- terms of negotiation. Um, two of the three have verbalized to me that they are very close. Um, one, we are still unsure of the progress and the status. Um, and so I'm optimistic that December one, I, that I can bring you um at least a few more plans for recommended approval.
Okay. So the motion today is to approve the fourteen?
Yes.
Alright. Anything else you need to add for this section?
No, just that um folk, yes, I should say yes, just for folks that are still working on revisions or still working with their bargaining units. Um, we have given those LAAs until noon on November twenty-fifth to submit final documents for review for consideration for approval at the December one. Um.
Alright. Now, the executive directors, their motion here for us.
There is, um, but member Lynch has a question or a comment.
Yeah, I, I am, I know that, that you've said it before. I think I just want to be clear. So they have, everybody has. Who has not yet submitted has until noon on December twenty twenty-five. To submit and to have them be approved, or they may be at risk of receiving a warning, correct?
Yeah, so that date is November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at noon, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Alright, any further co- question, the comments? If not, let's read the motion, please.
Yep, give me one second. Okay, after reviewing the AIB staff's recommendations, the motion is for the board to approve the twenty twenty-five career ladder plan submitted by. Uh, the fourteen counties that uh Libby uh just. Read off. I can read them again if you would like.
That's okay, we, we got them, yeah.
Okay. That's the motion.
Yeah, alright, I shall move with a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Move and properly second. Any further questions or comments? Let's go again over the deadlines and timeframe for which uh. Uh, action is requested before we vote to make sure people fully understand. Libby?
Absolutely. So if an LEA and local education association have not entered into a sign agreement on career ladder matters subject to collective bargaining submitted to the AIB. On or before twelve P M, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the LEA will be at risk of receiving a warning from the AIB in accordance with law.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, Bedford's comment. Any further com- comments or questions? If not, uh, call the. Vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Here and none, the motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. The next item is career counseling and for that I will turn it over to. Uh, Rachel Amstutz, who's the uh Policy Director and Gretchen Chu.
Rachel, you want me to go? I think so. Okay, I'm happy to provide an update on the career counseling since uh last month's board meeting. Um, as you know, the AIB staff have been reviewing the career counseling partner agreements between the. LEA, the workforce board and the community college that specify how career counseling is organized in each county. Um, this is an annual review that we do. And this year, in some cases, the partners submitted revised MOUs, um, others just provided a denoms with, at this year's budget or whatever else we might need. And at the last meeting, we were able to recommend eleven counties for approval. And for those that were not quite ready, we appreciate the back and forth you've been doing with the partners since then, working with us um for any requested revisions and clarifications. And we're pleased to share that today we can recommend approval of the final thirteen, which are on the next slide. So that would get us to all twenty-four.
Okay, who are the thirteen?
They are Allegheny County, Anarumo County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Carolyn County, Dorchester County, Howard County, Kent County. Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Queen Anne's County, Talbot County and Wacomiko County.
And were we overall in terms of who's in and who's out and so forth?
Everybody would be in. We had eleven last time and this would be thirteen.
Okay, alright. Okay.
Okay, so the motion. I don't see any um questions or comments. The motion uh is after reviewing the AIB staff's recommendations. The board approves the twenty twenty-five updated career counseling memorandum of understanding submitted by local education agencies, local workforce development boards and community colleges. In the thirteen counties that Gretchen just indicated and that are on the screen.
Okay, I shall move. There's a second to the motion.
I second it.
The move and property second. Any questions, comments or un, any unreadiness? Hearing or seeing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing or hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an update on the comprehensive math plans. And um again, uh, turn it over to Gretchen and Rachel Amstutz.
Thank you. Um, as Rachel mentioned earlier, uh MSD has been leading the review of the LEA comprehensive math plans. And we want to just give an update on the status of that work. Um, MSD has been supporting the LEAs in this process with guidance and TA throughout. And then all twenty-four LEAs submitted their plans to MSD um as required by September thirtieth. And then the plan reviews started in early October and um John Tucker University and AIB participated in that plan review. And some of the details are on the next slide, which you can see. I'll kind of give you a status update based on that. Um, so the initial review is in October and at that point, um, ten LEAs were identified as being in the final stage of approval and fourteen required some revisions. Um, and so we're just sort of hitting up against a time crunch here. So um, we're not able to really get to. A full state of approval yet, but we did get an update yesterday on the current status and we've moved from ten LEAs being in the final stage of approval to fourteen. And then there's still eight that are under review by MSD. They did some revisions and they got submitted back to MSD. And then two LEAs have been granted extensions to late November, early December. So you can see that um. Uh, sorry, got distracted there. Um, MSD expects all plans to be finalized shortly. They say that they are working on it and they are just in the process of reviewing everything. And at that point, they will then make a recommendation to AIB about approval for all these plans. So we're still on track to meet the February one deadline, but we don't have anything to finally approve today.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions?
I do not see any.
Okay, alright.
Okay, the next item is an update on the power school reporting and um minimum school funding. Uh, sorry.
No more.
Okay, um, so uh, next slide. Um, at this point, um, just a reminder about the joint minimum school funding policy that the AIB and the State Board of Education adopted. Um, and um, we have a link to this for everyone, but just to summarize it at a high level. Um, the policy established fiscal twenty-five as the baseline year for um evaluating uh meeting the minimum school funding. Requirement in, in the statute. And then it established a, a timeline for, for an expectation that all LEAs would meet the minimum school funding requirement for all. Nine programs by fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. And um that fiscal twenty twenty-six. Uh, any LEA that was not already meeting the full requirement would be required to reduce the gap between. between uh what they've done in fiscal twenty five and a hundred percent by fifty percent. So that's a little bit complicated, and to add to the complication, it is the number of students attending uh schools that meet the minimum school funding requirement uh is, is what the metric is. And so we'll get into that more in a minute, but um that's the policy and that's sort of the timeline that the L A's are working toward. What have they done in fiscal twenty five? And the policy refers to making a good faith effort to meet the requirement in fiscal twenty five. If the requirement is not being met in fiscal twenty five, it has to be met by fiscal year twenty seven, and there's a midpoint requirement for fiscal year twenty six. As you all know, the L A's have been um working to code their data to be able uh at the school level to be able to report into Power School um how they are expending their blueprint funds um across the nine programs that are required um under the blueprint law. Uh, at this point, all L A's have submitted their final fiscal year twenty five expenditure data to Power School. Um, and by Power School, that Power School is the um financial reporting system that uh M S D E um contracted with Power School to develop in collaboration with A I B. Uh, and so that data has been submitted uh as of uh October of twenty twenty five, so last month. And um, in terms of what was submitted, uh, we can report that all twenty four L A's have coded at least a third of their blueprint expenditures at the school level. Um, and, and, and by coding, that means that they're assigning a location to the expenditure of certain funds uh within the foundation program or compensatory education. Um, and um, they've identified those funds being spent at a school. And also as a reminder, the minimum school funding requirement is, is re- is about uh ensuring that the funds that are being provided for students under the various programs are actually following them and being spent at the school where those students are going to school. Uh. So at least um a third of expenditures have been coded at the school level for every L E A. Across the state, um, um, a majority of the expenditures have been coded at the school level, eighty-two percent on average um by most L A's. Uh, there are three L A's that have not coded any funds at the school level for between one and three programs. So, you know, overall, um, eighty-two percent of expenditures are being coded at the school level, but there are um a few L A's that have not coded any funds at the school level for, for several programs. So that is the fiscal twenty five state of things. Um, if we can go to the next slide. Um, in terms of minimum school funding progress in fiscal year twenty five, which again is the baseline year, um, the three programs that have the highest rates of meeting minimum school funding are the foundation program, which is by far the largest state aid program. Uh, college and career readiness, which are the funds that are provided um for student to L A's based on the number of students that meet the college and career readiness requirement by the end of tenth grade. Uh, well, and if they meet it in eleventh and twelfth grade, that is also counted. And then special education um had the highest rates of, of meeting minimum school funding. Uh, for special education, L A's have the option in the statute to report it either at the school level or um, in the aggregate across the L E A, and seven L A's have elected to report it at the, in the aggregate. Um, and so um that is part of what is pushing the percentage above a hundred percent um as well as the fact that um many, all probably L A's spend more than what is um provided through the formulas for special education to meet the needs of their um students with disabilities. Um, and so for these programs, foundation, college and career readiness, and special education, uh, many L A's are actually already meeting the minimum school funding requirement in fiscal year twenty five. Uh, the three programs that have the um lowest amount of uh number of students meeting and schools meeting the minimum school funding requirement are concentration of poverty, compensatory education, and multilingual learners. And so that means those are the areas where L A's will need to make the most progress in fiscal year twenty six in order to meet that requirement in the joint policy that they close the gap between where they are in fiscal twenty five and where they need to be in fiscal year twenty seven by fifty percent. Um, and.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
Yeah. Is there a, a, a major difference between concentration of poverty and compensatory education and between those two and the multilingual learners?
Um, well, let me start, and then I will ask Simone, Paul, our financial analyst, to um provide more detail, but I do want to share on concentration of poverty, uh, we do, uh, we are looking into this um because one of the uh, concentration of poverty funds um are, is one of the programs that is a hundred percent. So all of the dollars that are uh being provided for concentration of poverty under the, under the law are uh required to be spent at a community school.
So that, that's, concentration of poverty is community school funding.
It is, exactly, yes. And um, we're, we're, we're um we've been working with M S D E and the L A's to uh be able to reconcile the data because one of the issues with concentration of poverty is that um, the L A's have not uh been able to expend all of the dollars in the fiscal year that the funds were provided. Um, you know, for various reasons, but you know, particularly if they either weren't able to hire a community school coordinator, or if they weren't able to um um, provide for some of the healthcare coverage, and uh, and then if all of the funds weren't able to be utilized um in a current, in a fiscal year for wraparound services. And so they do have the ability to carry forward those dollars as they do for all state formula funds. Um, in uh, but, but under the blueprint um and what's called the baby blue book, which is the um financial reporting guideline uh that M S D E publishes. They're allowed to carry forward those funds for two additional years. And I, we think that, that the carry forward and what's being reported in Power School is affecting the percentage calculations of meeting minimum school funding. So we are working on that, and we will provide an update um in December. Uh, and hopefully we will have uh been able to reconcile the data and explain what we're seeing being reported in Power School uh, a little better because right now we're, we're not, we're not entirely sure. Simone, can you share more about the comparison, the percent met between concentration poverty compet and multilingual learners?
Sure. So concentration of poverty, um, which you mentioned Executive Director highs touches community schools, compensatory education touches um or serves at promised students, so there's a bit of an overlap there. Not as much restriction on the compensatory ed side. Um, for F Y twenty five progress um statewide for concentration of poverty that sat at twenty-seven percent. Compensatory education, the statewide average um was thirty-eight percent. And then for multilingual learners, the statewide average um was thirty-five percent.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, let, let us step back a, a second here because um I want to make sure that we are comparing apples to apples and making sure we fully understand the challenge. Uh, the challenge in some of this could very well be that they have not been uh appropriately coded. Because in some of the jurisdictions that we've looked at, it's hard for me to believe that they are not doing a better job uh given the makeup of the campuses, I mean, of, of the, of the, of the schools. And they have not, they probably have not followed through on appropriately coding all of this. So there is a disconnect here between what they're actually doing. It may be, maybe in some cases, what they reported thus far. Uh, I'm not sure that the numbers just describe are reflective of actually what they are doing. But we need to follow through to make sure that uh we have captured that appropriately. So I don't want the assumption to be that a quarter of them are not, but twenty-five, thirty percent or so is only what we have in actuality. That is reflected on how they've made the conversion to uh reflecting it in their records as such. Am I explaining that correctly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think you, you, you absolutely are, and I'm glad that you brought that up because, and I was going to mention that um regarding the twenty-six data as well, but uh, we certainly heard uh in the progress conferences from pretty much all of the L A's as well as um the A I B has provided technical assistance through uh resource allocation partners that are working with most of our L A's to help support them in strategies to um code expenditures and to identify uh models for allocating and reallocating resources to meet the requirement. And so we're certainly um cognizant of the challenge uh and the heavy lift that coding um the data is. Um, and.
Well, so you mentioned, what you mentioned coded, to explain what that, what that entails, what we're talking about here.
Sure, it, it means identifying, um, let's just say for um the compensatory education program, um, which is provided based on um uh, students that are essentially, it's a proxy for students that need additional resources to be successful. Um, and it uses the um different versions of the free reduced price meal count to identify those students and the funds that should be following those students to their schools.
That's each, that's each and every student that you're talking about that didn't have that, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
That, that means identify each and every student that falls within those categories?
Well, the expenditures that fall within those categories, and then, and then I, and then coding it to a school. So identifying the amount of expenditures that are being used for, say, additional tutoring to provide or after-school support to, to support students that need um additional academic interventions, and then saying this amount of dollars is being spent at this school for this.
For these, for this, for this purpose. For these students.
Well, the, the, the student count is sort of separate, is, is the enrollment count, so they're not, they're not identifying that part. They're identifying the amount of, of expenditures um out of that program and which school it's being spent at on behalf of students.
Yeah, but you got to make the connection with the, the students at that school, right?
Yes, and we have, for each program, there is a count.
Yeah.
By school.
Yeah.
For that program.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Uh, any other further comments or questions on this, uh? A couple of things, yeah, I'm sorry.
Then one more slide. So we, so this is, so these two slides were about fiscal year twenty five data. Um, we do have um the twenty-six data that is also being reported into Power School now, and we're now in fiscal year twenty six. Um, we, all L A's are reporting both their budget data and their expenditure data for fiscal year twenty six into Power School, but obviously, we're just a few months into um the fiscal year twenty six, so looking at actual expenditures is not uh, helpful. Uh, and so we can look to budgeted data uh, to the extent that it has been coded to determine whether L A's are planning, have budgeted to meet the minimum school funding requirement in fiscal year twenty six. And um based on the data that has been reported by the L A's, eleven L A's have budgeted to meet the minimum school funding requirement in fiscal year twenty six for, for, at least four of the nine programs um that are required under minimum school funding. Um, there are two L A's have, that have not budgeted to meet M S F for any program in fiscal year twenty six. Uh, but to your point, Mr. Chair, there are actually, based on the budgeted data, fewer L A's have budgeted to meet minimum school funding in twenty six than actually are meeting it in fiscal year twenty five. And this is uh, this is, you know, it could be a function of the budget, but it, it more likely is a function of the fact that most L A's focus their coding efforts on their twenty, on their actual expenditure data before they started coding their budget data, and um, un- unfortunately, those are two different data sets in L A's, and so they can code their expenditure data, and it's the expenditure data that the, whether they meet minimum school funding is based on. But in terms of knowing whether they're budgeting to meet it, they also have to code their budget data separately.
Okay.
And so we think that that is, is most likely why, based on the current data in Power School, we would, we're seeing fewer L A's that have um budgeted to meet minimum school funding than actually met it in fiscal year twenty five.
Yeah, okay. Any comments or questions?
Um, Vice Chair Curly.
Yes, so just to be, uh, so I have it clear in my mind. Uh, for this year, to determine adequate uh progress on minimum school funding, we uh are, need to determine if an L E A has made good faith effort because it's, that was the requirement in twenty five, right?
Correct.
Next year at this time, we will be looking to see if they have closed the gap by fifty percent.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Um. As for those data points, um, I think that th- there may be some further question or discussions about uh the timeframe. Uh, two points I want to make related to, to this area that came up in our um monitor, progress monitoring sessions. Question one was uh, given changes that may occur between budget, school years, and educational requirements throughout the year. And we were presented with examples of potential mid-year changes or after-budget changes, if you will, and I hope I'm describing this correctly. Whereby someone budgeted starts in a certain manner, and because of educational necessities, in their opinion, they make changes between the allocation of personnel or equipment or programs from one point to the other mid-year. And it's something that happens, uh, and hopefully it happens fairly uh rarely. And how would that be viewed by the uh A I B? My initial response in that section was that I did not believe that uh if there was a educational rationale for that, that that would be something that someone would look at and say, well, you failed to make the uh, the connection between the, the uh uh, the, the funding requirements that we have for your school in terms of seventy-five, twenty-five percent. And I want to make sure that uh the board fully understood what I said, and so that there's a question about this, we need to make sure we are understanding because that may necessitate on some parts someone throwing in a waiver request based on that kind of lack of understanding of how those things may work out. So that was my response, that I think that it requires some explanation, but uh, short of that. But uh short of that, it would not be punitive to say uh therefore you should have lost, or your funds would be upheld as a result of your, that, that type of occurrence happened. I think I explained that uh the way the question was phrased and in that all board members were not part of that discussion. Uh, that was my response to it, and I hope that um I'm reflecting something that would be consistent with how we would view such things. But that may, and, and you may look at that and say, oh, boy, that's, that seems pretty, pretty rare, and I'm not sure that would happen, and what could change to make that, that kind of occurrence to come about? And in a few places, to my surprise, it really didn't require a great deal to alter that because of the size of the school and the program or the personnel associated with that. And so in one or two cases, it was explained that we can change a program or a few handful of people, and we may be over or above that uh after the school year started. So, uh, that was one. The second one was, how closely are we uh adhering to the precise numbers? And my review was, and my response was that uh we're not gonna get into rounding errors or challenges. If someone said that had forty-four point nine or forty-eight point seven or whatever it may be, um, they made a good faith effort to get there, that we're not gonna say, well, uh, there's a fraction of a percentage of a point here, there that you've missed, but with explanation and with a review of that, uh, those kinds of things can be discussed and hopefully resolved. And, but those questions popped up during the session, so it was a definition of how closely you monitor that. That was something far off, clearly that's a different question. But some people are going through the excruciating task of looking down to the fine print of the fine percentage point because of the changes in personnel and people they're in and changes throughout the year based on educational requirements and so forth. Inconsistent with what they started off with, there may be changes. So I wanted to be clear with the board, what I stated in my response and, and hopefully uh that could be a sentiment of how we would approach this, because uh we can't expect to have, on all occasion, on all school systems across the entire state, uh, what I consider to be perfection um as opposed to the promise and the practical realities of what we face, but those kinds of things can be worked out with staff and some explanation as we go forward.
Member Robinson has either a question or a comment, but I did just wanna say, in terms of part of your comment around things that could occur later in the school year, um we do have, our next agenda item is to modify the uh waiver request timeline, and um we do have a proposal to add a second date later in the school year that would allow LEAs to request waivers based on those um unanticipated uh happenings, um which we'll get to in the next item.
I know, but my point is that I don't wanna get to the waiver and resolving that, but some of those things can be resolved in explanation with the staff short of even a later date of a waiver. So that's the point I'm making. And the waiver itself could take care of probably some of that as well, so.
Member Robinson?
Hi, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you were saying, Mr. Chair. Were you, so you're saying in the cases where an LEA budgets to meet um budgets to meet minimum school funding in a category, and then something happens and they don't, you're saying I, I guess, I, I guess that's where, that's where I'm stuck. Are you saying like if they, they've already budgeted to meet the, the, the thing, the category, and then something happens?
Mid-year, yeah, something happens mid-year. Now, it depends on the size of that and what we're talking about, but their problem was, okay, we have a relatively small system. Um, and any few changes could, could alter what we budgeted for and during the school year, what we actually did. And my response was, well, it depends on what you're talking about and how big a change that is, but if it's something that came about as a close, uh, uh, as a necessity, we wouldn't go back and say, well, okay, retroactively, uh, we're gonna go back and change that or, or alter that in some fashion, that's all.
So, so I guess my question is more of like a practical one. And looking at what's on the screen, it feels like, uh, maybe I, I misinterpreted. I thought Executive Director Heiss was saying that a lot of LEAs focus on, on coding their expenditure data, because that's what's um uh monitored, and that's what they can be held accountable for. How do we know that people have budgeted effectively if they're not? I mean, they're not required to, I guess, but like, if they're not actively coding their budgets, their budgeted um categories, like how do we know that that's what they, that they budget for? Like, I, I guess that's why I got a little bit confused, cuz on the screen, it, it appears like a lot of LEAs are not budgeting the, are not coding their budgets. They're doing a better job of quoting their expenditures, but not their budgets, so.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure about that, and that, that was not the same question that I raised. That was a different question. That is, some simply have not, for a variety of reasons, maybe personnel, the time, and how difficult it is to do that, they have not actually coded appropriately. Although they may be spending appropriately, they simply have not coded it. That's one issue. That's why I said the twenty-five or thirty percent that they have may not reflect the reality. That's something that the staff is now working with them to try to bring a closure to that, to understand uh precisely what those numbers reflect. So twenty-five or thirty percent, it could be high or low, most often time. Their view is that we are much closer to uh the requirements than what is reflected right now. We just simply have not been able to code it to demonstrate that for you. That's, that's one issue. That's not what I was talking about there. I'm talking about where they have actually met the requirements, start the requirements in that budget, and then during the school year, something changes and they have to alter what they placed in their budget or some adjustments needs to be made. And they gave a couple of examples on a few programs. Again, these were more or less in the smaller programs, the smallest system, where a small change in the year could alter whether or not they're at seventy-five or at seventy. That's their point, yeah.
That, I get that part. No, I, I guess what I'm saying is, if what, what you're saying, I could, I could potentially get behind. I guess I'm stuck because the, if, if LEAs aren't necessarily coding their budgeted data fully, it's hard to say that they would have made um, like that they were on the right track and then something happened. Something could have very well happened like you're describing, I
No, no, that, that's a definition. That's different. What I, the first one is, we reflected that only twenty-five or thirty percent of those are there at this point. That's what was reflected in the statement. My response to that was, we may be much better, they may be much better than twenty-five or thirty percent only because they have not placed the right, have not coded appropriately. It could be higher, it could be lower. They have to go back and the staff is gonna work with them to make sure they get the actual numbers to reflect that, that's all. So I didn't want it to go out that, oh, only school system X is doing such a poor job, they're only at twenty-five percent. They may be much higher than that. We will find that out. They're, they're gonna determine that. That's the point I was making, is that, that, that some may be higher or better, but we would know that, so no action will need to be taken in regards to that. I just simply did not want school system X to be saying, well, we're only at twenty-five percent, and they're saying, well, we may be better than that. Well, just come in and demonstrate that for us, that's all. And the other problem is some, is, is different from that.
Mr. Chair, um, I see Member Lynch also has her hand up. I just wanna, um, I think what Member Robinson is saying is, um if LEAs are not reflecting accurately their budgeted uh plan in, in Power School, then it will be challenging to, for them to explain why they didn't meet, why something changed, if they weren't, if, if we don't have the data to show that they were
I don't see, yeah, but I don't see that as the problem. Uh, my problem is, make sure they reflect accurately in Power Schools what they're doing. But even if they complete that, and they're precisely on point with that, you still have the problem of something changes mid-year. That's my point. That not only reflects those schools, but it reflects everybody. It's not just the schools that have not coded appropriately. It may reflect those who are coded one hundred percent accurately, but then something changes during that process.
Right, right, and so I think
It has no relationship per se to those that are not coded appropriately. That's a reflection of everybody. Even if everybody one hundred percent coded everything accurately, you still may have the problem that
Absolutely.
difference between what they budgeted for and what they coded and what happened during the mid-year. And in a few cases, a slight change would dip them under above that number.
Right. Uh, Member Lynch?
Yeah, I think um I may have lost the through line here, so I just want for my own clarity to kind of come, come back to the larger conversation. And so I think what I'm understanding is that there are two different sort of processes that we wanna be monitoring and making sure are happening correctly. The first is that the budget data, to Member Robinson's point, what, what people are budgeting for, needs to be inputted and accurate. Because if you're not even budgeting for those funds to go where, where they are supposed to go, to me, that is a pretty large concern that we're not even budgeting for those funds to go. The second part, I think, to um our chair's point, is that um there are things that happen throughout any school year that need to be accounted for, and so if you have budgeted, but then there is something unexpected, we wanna be able to find a process by which we would be evaluating that. Both of these have waiver processes, processing, official processes by which districts need to submit their data, their evidence, their reasoning to us for formal consideration for a waiver process. So it isn't just like, I think I would have done it, trust us, it's happening, but that we actually have, and I think you may, you, I think you said you're gonna be talking about this in a minute, as to what those official waiver processes will be. But I am, I, I don't know if it's appropriate now, um Madam Executive Director, or if it's something that we wanna talk about in the future, but I do want us to maybe come back to the original sort of top line of what minimum school funding is and what the purpose was, and why when the Kerwin Commission first evaluated this, we moved from that Thornton formula to minimum school funding. Um, because I, I really do not want to lose the fact that the purpose of this is that funding is following students. And that when we look at the data right now, we can clearly see across the state, this is not district-specific, but across the state, we have populations of students who are not being served well. We can name them. They're special education students. They are multilingual learner students. Um, you know, we know that, that we have needs in both literacy and math. And so if we are not allowing those, the purpose was to make sure that those funds were following those students in order to make sure that they were getting all of the services that they needed to perform and to close gaps. Um, and so every data point is a child. And so these funds follow children. And I under, I understand the complexity of what that looks like from a, a system level, but I, I also don't wanna lose sight of the fact that this is incredibly important, because it is one of the major pillars of the blueprint, that we are ensuring that our taxpayer dollars, our taxpayer funds, the way that we are allocating funds is following students who have the, the greatest amount of need that we need to make that that change for. So I, I don't wanna get lost in coding. The coding is very important, but I don't want coding to be the reason that children don't get the services they need, and I think that is just a point I need to.
Well, in order to, in order to ensure that, you need to code it.
Correct, but I don't want it's hard code, it's hard to code to be the reason that we don't have students getting the funding, following them. You know, like, that's my only, of course, coding is very difficult. I am not underestimating the complexities of what it is like to do this. We've heard it. I, I feel it. My heart goes out to these districts who are doing their very best. I think as the Accountability and Implementation Board, we have the responsibility to make sure that the intent of the law is being followed, which was that funding would be following students, and so we've done things like put, put technical assistance in place for our districts. We've tried to listen to what is a re, is reasonable. We have these waiver processes to understand that things happen. We also have the responsibility to our students to push forward and do really difficult things.
I agree with that, but the question is to do difficult things that are, that are reasonable and not get tied down into unbelievable bureaucratic systems whereby we're dealing with four or five students and sending people through a process that requires an inordinate amount of time, money, and resource. That's my point. That's what I'm trying to avoid. That some places we are talking about a handful of students, and we're spending an inordinate amount of time, money, and effort to get that right uh in the sake of coding and process. Uh, I interpret this to be precisely what you've stated, but there's some point, that you wanna throw back and end up in a bureaucracy, we have a zillion waivers coming at us about something that involved five students. That's my point. And we could end up that way. Okay, let's go on to the next part, question.
Uh, Member Robinson is, I think, your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, to thank you, Member Lynch, for kind of bringing us back to the um the headline. Um, I think that's kind of what I was getting at when I was speaking, like, it's not so much that I think that the coding of the budget data is like the end-all be-all, it's more that how do we know that you're actually making plans to deliver, send the money to the students to where it belongs? And so I think that was just kind of like the overarching thing. It's like, you, you kind of gotta, you have to do that point, you have to do that part first in order to know that you were on the right track. And do things happen? Yes, and that's why, like you mentioned, there are waiver um, there's waiver processes, but at some point, we need to know that you're making the effort in the first place. And I, I think that um, you know, some districts have, like, they're making a lot of gains in coding the expenditure data. I think it would be helpful to also see budget data coded as well, so that we can know that we're on the right track. And if something happens like the chair mentioned, then we kind of have a sense for, oh, but it was scheduled to be a certain way, and then something happened. That's a different conversation.
Yeah, and I will just add that um I think s- some of these considerations are, are what led to the joint policy and providing sort of a three-year runway for LEAs to, to meet the requirement, so that recognizing that it was, you know, a heavy lift to uh to code all of their data and, and then once they have the data coded, to then make the changes that might be necessary to shift resources to then meet the requirement. So I think the underlying rationale for providing the three-year runway to meet the minimum school funding requirement was in recognition of that it would, would take some time, and that it is difficult. Um, and um, but, you know, I think the board, you know, continues to demonstrate that the, the underlying policy, that the dollars that the blueprint has allocated for the different funding formulas, which serve students that have different needs, that the expectation is that you know, for most of the programs, it's not all of the money. It's seventy-five percent of that money is making its way to the schools and serving the students that the funding is being provided for, and that um to Member Lynch's um point, that does go back to the adequacy study um and the um findings of the Kerwin Commission. Um, and I think, I'll speak for myself um as, as staffing of the commission, but uh Vice Chair Kirwin may want to speak to this too. I think it was one of the most um shocking moments in the commission when um we reviewed data that showed that Maryland's um funding formulas, the Thornton formulas, that were designed to be, to address adequacy and student needs um that our spending at the statewide level was regressive, meaning that schools with fewer low-income students were receiving more funds than schools with more low-income students. That was sort of an aha moment that sort of uh there needed to be additional um guidelines or requirements around how, you know, because the state is providing the funding and the counties, you know, there's also provisions for the counties to provide their share of all the funds, but, but a, an additional level of accountability that the dollars are, are really But, but it's a, an additional level of accountability that the dollars are, are really going to support the students that, that they're intended to serve.
You stated that accurately.
Thank you. Uh, member Werner.
Thanks. Um, I also wanted to echo uh, member Lynch's uh, comments. Um, I guess one of the things, I'm, I'm not a CFO or an accountant and I'm still um, learning about the complexities of um, what the shift is, but uh, there was a CFO that I recall had kind of used the analogy of that this is like uh, shifting a, a large ship, um, that it takes some time to do it well. And the other thing that I've learned in this process is that in some cases, um, our CFOs and financial teams have choices when it comes to how things are coded. And I think in some cases, um, that was, that was positive feedback, but it does um, I, I have some pause with that and when they're make, able to make choices, are those choices still um, supporting the intent of blueprint? Or are they so that they could be in compliance? And, and I know sometimes, for example, how a teacher is coded if they um, serve ML students or, you know, special populations. And and that is to no fault of anyone. I just, to her point, I want to make sure that this is being done with fidelity that when there is some of that flexibility and how these things are coded, that it's still following the intent of blueprint with it.
Uh, how do you determine that?
Well, that, and that I think is something that has come up as a, a larger question. Um, because I think that this is something that is as, because this is new, it seems that there are some flexibilities in how they're able to charge things to comp ed or foundation, or if it's going to a different category. And I don't know how we, how to, to dig into that more. But I just am concerned that in the end, that it won't make the shift that we thought it would.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not as convinced that it won't make the shift. The question is, will it make the shift in the timeframe that we've described in the precise manner that we prescribe? I have no doubt that the school system is going to make this change and are in fact making the change. What we are talking about are those challenges on the far end or extreme for which there needs to be potentially some adjustment. I don't question that these school system, we see that already in nada. The question would be on the extremes and do we have to necessarily have a process whereby we're looking at a ton of waivers? For what may be minor adjustments of stuff that could be done much more informally. That's the issue. So I think we're exploding the issue far greater than what the question is before us. They're not saying we're not making the changes. They're simply saying we need a little bit more time to make the change. And there may be some adjustments as we go forward. And if we need to, we'll come in and submit waivers. But then we're set uh, in a system where we've got a ton of waivers that are coming in. We're sitting around dealing with a ton of waivers for something that in a reasonable manner, you could deal with in a, in a much more uh, uh, realistic manner. That's the question. So I think we're phrasing the question far different for what they are looking at and what we're faced with. That's the question. Do we end up with a system, they right now, I already know, we could put in a waiver and a ton of them are prepared to send in waivers now for December the first. You'd be ended up with a ton of waivers. That's why we're looking at an adjustment of time and other things to go with that. So that's the issue. Do you end up with a ton of waivers to adjust something that even we could look at that and say it's relatively minor? But we'll come back to that in, in a heartbeat and so forth.
Member Lynch, do you, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just want to uh, address that quickly and we may have richer discussions in the future. Uh, it, it is my preference that every um, LEA would submit a waiver with their particular reasons. You know, in all of the conferences that I attended, everybody had reasons, but nobody's reasons were consistent. How far they were from actually making those goals were very different. The reasons were very different. Um, and I, I think that we have to evaluate um, the reasons, the data, the evidence very specifically for each. I know it's going to be difficult, but I think that's part of the work. Um, because I, I think that we owe it to, to the students and the families in each district to take that waiver process seriously and, and evaluate on a year-by-year basis, on a district-by-district, situation-by-situation. Um, I, I, it would, it, it would have to be incredibly compelling for me to say that we would not, that we would that, first of all, I don't think legally we probably can just sort of issue blanket waivers, but I, I would also really want to investigate every single situation because I think then also our recommendations for intervention and, and future mo- movement will also be different per district.
All right, let's go to the next item.
I was on mute. Sorry about that. Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's a good segue. Uh, if there aren't any more questions about um, uh, about sort of good faith progress for the moment to move on to our next agenda item, which uh, relates to the waiver request policy. And for that, I will turn it over to Alexandra Vernon, who is and continues to be our Finance Director and is now um, our, officially our Deputy Director of Operations. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Um, so before I uh, go into the discussion of the proposed modification to the waiver deadline, um, I, I do want to just briefly overview uh, the waiver policy. The waiver policy was developed by the AIB for our uh, local education agencies to request greater flexibility in meeting certain state funding requirements. So LEAs are able to apply for an exception or a waiver from specific requirements related to the funding formulas or programs for schools and for our at-promised students. And just to echo what Chair Leggett stated, the policy recognizes that strict adherence to formulas isn't always practical. Um, especially when our student demographics change significantly during the school year. Um, so going back to uh, Executive Director Heiss highlights uh, with the minimum school funding requirement for fiscal year twenty-six, um, is to close the gap between fiscal year twenty-five baseline data and the full funding requirement for fiscal year twenty-seven. The AIB policy allows LEAs to request a waiver if they do not anticipate meeting that requirement. And next slide. So the proposed change is to the administrative deadline for submitting these waiver requests. The current policy requires LEAs to submit waiver requests by December first. Um, however, let, let me just backtrack a little bit to the timeline because the deadline for LEAs to first submit their final fiscal year twenty-five expenditure data was October fifteenth. The original guidance that the AIB provided included a fifty percent template that LEAs could use to determine the fiscal year twenty-six minimum school funding targets. However, during the discussions with MSD and LEAs, uh, CFOs, it was preferred that the AIB provide those templates. So the AIB used the data that was submitted in Power School by the LEAs to identify the fiscal year twenty-six minimum school funding targets for each of the programs and shared that fifty percent workbook with each LEA to review their data and provide feedback. The final version of the workbook, which included the minimum school funding targets for fiscal year twenty-six, was then provided to the LEAs on November seventh. So again, the current policy right now requires the LEAs to submit waiver requests by December first. The problem is that it doesn't give a lot of time for LEAs to complete their financial reviews. So if, and if you can go back to the slide, sorry, I'm kind of jumping around with the timeline. Um, but we're proposing to formally change the submission deadline this year for fiscal year twenty-six waivers from December first to March first, which would provide the LEAs with three additional months to review their final fiscal year twenty-five expenditure data and fiscal year twenty-six targets to determine if they have budgeted to meet minimum school funding in fiscal year twenty-six. And then for future years as a two-part process, um, it would allow LEAs to submit a waiver request by December fifteenth if they had not budgeted to meet minimum school funding in the current fiscal year. And then again, by May first, if they budgeted to meet the minimum school funding, but based on the actual expenditures, don't anticipate meeting minimum school funding for particular schools and programs. So just to be clear, criteria and grounds for the waiver remain the same. The proposed change is a minor adjustment to the timeline, but effectively will reduce administrative burden on the LEAs and the AIB by, by allowing more time for review and submission based on these situational needs.
Okay, that is the proposal before us. So there's some discussion around the proposal. And that will be formulated in a motion in a moment, but the discussion, uh, you recognize anyone there, Madam Executive Director?
I do not s- see any, any hands at the moment. I did want to um, um, just double check that um, Alex, that you also discussed, so March first, twenty-twenty-six would be for the fiscal year twenty-six request, and then we have this two-part process.
Correct, yes.
For start for waivers beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Good. All right, uh, this is in a, the proposal is in form of a motion at this point in time, so I would move the waiver extended deadline to March the first two thousand twenty-six. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Uh, Vice Chair Kerwin does have.
Wait, wait just a second. Uh, do the motions on the floor, any unreadiness, questions or concerns? But Chair, Chair Kerwin?
You're muted, uh, Dr. Kerwin.
No comment. I'm all, uh, uh, go ahead and call for the vote.
Can I, I'm sorry, the motion is for not just for the December one, um, sorry, the motion is not just to move the deadline to March first, twenty-twenty-six, but also beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven to move the deadline, the, to the two-part process of December fifteenth and then May first.
Yeah, I'm, I'm referring to the motion that we have before us uh, in the, in the written document, so. And that has both of those in there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any unreadiness, questions or concerns in reference to the motion?
Well, I just, I think this two-part process going for, forward makes imminent good sense. And uh, it sort of addresses the problem that we were talking about uh, earlier on uh, uh, our, our discussion about um, circumstances that arise after a good, uh, during the school year after a good faith effort to uh, get things budgeted. So I, this makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay. All right. Any further unread, unreadiness, the comments?
Did, I'm sorry, was there a second to this motion? I think I
Yes, yes.
I think there were two seconds.
And who, who, who was the second?
Yeah.
I think it was Cortina.
Cortina did, and I'm seconded it, but I was muted.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any further questions or unreadiness? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Uh, the two-part components there too. And first, we move the deadline back to March this first, two thousand twenty-six. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposition, the motion is approved.
Okay, the next agenda item uh, is our, the Board's twenty-twenty-six recommended legislative actions. And um, for that, we have Joy Schaefer, our Government Relations Director, who is going to lead the presentation. Joy?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, so your discussion on this item today um, is the culmination of your consideration over several meetings um, in September and October of the legislative changes to blueprint implementation that um, we've received suggestions for. Uh, with those deliberations in mind, uh, it's our hope today that we get your approval of the legislative changes that the AIB will recommend in the twenty-twenty-six legislative session. Um, so on this slide, I want to just review at a high level and briefly the process by which we're arriving at today's decision points. Um, the legislative suggestions uh, under consideration came from a very robust, months-long public engagement process or an out of the annual requirement that we update the blueprint comprehensive plan. Uh, the process began in May in, and in uh, June through July, the board reviewed and considered those suggested updates and final adoption of them occurred at your July twenty-fourth meeting. Um, we held the suggestions that we identified as requiring a change to statute for a specific review process, um, which began in August with staff evaluations of those suggestions. Uh, I will note, however, that we did cover these suggested legislative changes at the Board's July um, twenty-fourth meeting and at every, a subsequent meeting of the Board um, through today. The Board also discussed these legislative suggestions with the State Board of Education at the September thirtieth um, Board meeting, uh, joint meeting. So over the last few months, we continue to receive legislative suggestions. Those were considered at your Board meetings as well. And of course, um, staff continued to evaluate these additional suggestions. Uh, before I move on to the next slide, I just want to bring your attention to the link that appears at the bottom of this slide and all the slides that will follow. That is a link to the document, uh, twenty-twenty-six recommended legislative actions, which provides uh, detailed descriptions of each suggestion, uh, as well as staff notes um, for consideration for each. So next slide, please. Uh, so I'll highlight here that AIB's consideration of recommendations for legislative action has been very careful, deliberate. Suggestions were evaluated in order to fully understand their policy and fiscal implement, implement uh, implications and impacts to the implementation of the blue, uh, blueprint. So while hearing feedback and input from a variety of stakeholders, uh, we evaluated a total of thirty-nine suggestions for legislative action. Um, and they were considered by the Board. The Board and AIB staff participated in meetings and discussions with implementation partners and advocates uh, gather relevant data and research and fiscal analyses uh, for each relative to their impact on implementation and the ability to achieve the blueprint's intended outcomes. Next slide, please. The legislative actions we'll be sharing today meet specific parameters, uh, which include the change is necessary to the faithful implementation of the blueprint as intended. Without the change, the intended outcomes or anticipated results of the blueprint will not be achieved. And that legislative change does not reflect in a conflict between blueprint objectives, particularly as a result of limited resources uh, such as time, funding or capacity. I'll also reiterate that these, uh, that the Board has discussed these uh, recommendations in depth over several public meetings. So I'm going to try to keep my summary of them um, high level and brief. Um, so for pillar two, there are, thank you, three recommendations related to teacher preparation and certification. Um, the first would allow out-of-state teacher candidates to verify two years of effective teaching experience as a sub, a substitute for a test of teaching ability. Uh, this is a means to address the state's teacher shortage. The second allows teacher preparation programs that receive MSD approval to develop a portfolio-based assessment which can be used by candidates. This is a technical fix, if you will, to ensure the programs uh, receiving MSD approval are included in this option. And then the third would allow registered teacher apprentices who successfully complete an MSD-sponsored teacher apprentice program uh, to provide the apprenticeship certificate in place of taking a uh, to provide the apprenticeship certificate in place of taking a teaching, a test of teaching ability. The rationale here is that the teacher uh, registered, uh, in a registered apprenticeship and completing them. Uh, those apprenticeships, like those apprenticeships in other fields are very rigorous and those fulfilling the requirements and receiving a final certi- uh, certification have exhibited a high level of expertise and competence. Um, and then the legislative change related to the career.
I have a question, please.
Sure.
Yeah, on, on the, on the uh, second bullet under teacher preparation, my recollection is not only can they develop, they, they can develop a portfolio-based assessment, but MSDE still has to approve that, uh, that, that assessment. Is that, I mean, they can't just.
Well, the change here is that um, right now, a teacher can complete a portfolio-based assessment of a nationally accredited program.
Right.
Um, what was left out was accredited programs approved by MSDE.
Okay.
So that's the specific legislative change.
Sure, thank you.
Um, so for career ladder, the legislative change related to that would delay to uh, July one, twenty thirty four. The requirement that newly licensed principals hold a national board certification, pending research on this certification and its impact on student outcomes and uh, the implementa- the feasibility of implementation. Not only will this allow us time to conduct this research, uh, it will also provide those educators entering the principal pipeline or thinking about entering the uh, principal pipelines ample time to plan and prepare. Next slide. Uh, in pillar three, the legislative change uh, relative to the career and technical education of the CTE Committee is to eliminate the Career and Technical Education Skills Standards Advisory Committee and to assign that body's charge to the CTE Committee. Um, the feeling here is that uh, there's no need for a separate body to do this work. And then the second change there uh, is in dual enrollment. It would extend the statutory authority of the AIB and State Board to require a minimum number of dual enrollment courses that an LEA must offer um, to uh, FY twenty thirty. This authority currently ends in FY twenty twenty seven. Next slide, please. Uh, in pillar four, we have been holding these changes until we were able to evaluate the findings and recommendation, or recommendations of the Governor's uh, Office for Children's Neighborhood Indicators of Poverty Report, uh, which um, as you know, the AIB has the statutory authority and responsibility to review uh, and based on the report's findings, make recommendations with regard to the calculation of a compensatory education formula. So after careful review, our recommendation for legislative action would be to maintain the current methodology for the student count in calculating this formula. Um, and in that second bullet, extend the current hold harmless for the community eligibility provision in the compensatory education formula through twenty twenty nine. Uh, because that is set to expire after uh, FY twenty twenty seven. Um, and as you know, the community eligibility provision is a, a federal program um, under uh, that's designed for eligible schools in low in- income areas, allows these schools to provide uh, free breakfast and lunch to all enrolled uh, students without requiring individual household applications. Next slide, please.
Joy?
Yes.
Before you go on, there's a couple of questions, but I also wanna just clarify. Um, I think there's a typo here, and the recommendation is to extend the whole time those through fiscal year twenty twenty eight. Cause it, the, uh, we're extending it for two years, which would be twenty seven and twenty eight.
Right, sorry about that.
That's, that's okay. So, and then um, I'm not sure who's, I think Chair, Vice Chair Kerwin?
Yes, um, this, uh, just, uh, for clarity, this addresses uh, exactly the issue that the Strong School Maryland uh, CEO raised at the beginning of our meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, uh, now, I will say, um, I, I, this, this is just reflects the recommendation for the twenty twenty six session in terms of addressing, because something must be done uh, in, for fiscal year twenty seven, and as we're proposing twenty eight, or else LEAs would actually receive less funds
Right.
um, for these programs. So we're recommending this as a um, um, transition to, and to provide more time to do further analysis and evaluation of both the proposals and other options that were not part of uh, the report um, that was provided by the Governor's Office for Children and um, ERS, so that uh, there can be some additional uh, information gathering, analysis, modeling to determine if there is a, a, a more accurate or better way to count these students. But right now, none of the options that have been put forward seem to result in, in, they, they result in the lower count in, in all, in all ways. Now, that might be accurate. Um, but I think we need to do more, have more time and, and do more work to understand all of that. Um, Member Robinson, did you still have a question?
You actually just addressed it. I wanted more context just for the public about the speech you just said, um,
Okay.
the, the, the funding changes that could happen based off of the report. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Yeah, great questions. Um, so the, the last one there is related to the Concentration of Poverty Grants. Uh, the suggested change would be to permanently authorize uh, local education agencies to use Concentration of Poverty grant funds in eligible schools to meet the World Languages Fine Arts COMAR requirement, uh, which is uh, also set to expire after uh, fiscal year twenty twenty seven. Um, next slide, please. And then the last is uh, something we're, we're very familiar with this year is uh, the elimination of a blueprint-related or required report. The um, annually required technology spending report. This information is um, provided in this report can, can likely be obtained in other reporting. Um, and then, next slide, please. Uh, I just want to elevate on this slide. Legislative suggestions we received that are not included in the slate of those proposed for approval today uh, as recommendations for the upcoming legislative session. These include advocacy to the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction, or the IAC, in the form of a letter to request they increase the portion of available funding for pre-K expansion to support blueprint requirements. Um, another is to support uh, the increase in the state's appropriation in fiscal year twenty twenty seven for the pre-K expansion grant program uh, to increase by thirteen point uh, three million, which would maintain the same number of seats at the higher per pupil funding rate, thereby keeping a steadier rate of, or maintaining a steadier rate of expansion. And then the last is the expansion of the tier one definition um, for pre-K students to include special education students and multilingual learners. And as we noted earlier, the tier one students are those students um, from families with gross annual incomes at or below the um, three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. So these suggestions, we want to just note uh, that they have a great deal of merit and would certainly enhance the implementation of the blueprint. Um, in fact, a couple of years ago, the AIB recommended uh, uh, the expansion of the tier one definition. Um, however, relative to the parameters with which we reviewed all legislative suggestions, um, I'll just say, for example, that the IAC is already required and already do prioritize pre-K expansion. Um, or with regard to the pre-K expansion grants, um, we are still waiting for um, some data as to how uh, those current uh, and past grant funds um, are spent and distributed, and so we're not comfortable at this time uh, in making a specific recommendation one way or the other. So again, these are worthy recommendations, but given the reality of our resource constraints in this environment, um, the feeling is that we should prioritize the implementation of the blueprint as it's currently prescribed by law. Next slide.
I think Member Robinson has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, back to slides on pillar five.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the winning report, currently that's an annual report, right? When the last time we talked about this, was it, was there a recommendation of like going bi-annually or something like that? And now we're, okay, so we're, we're uh, proposing the elimination, not the, the change in the year because of the community stakeholder feedback?
Well, the, the, the feedback we received from that suggestion was that would actually be um, more onerous because the look back would then be over multiple years, so.
Okay, no, I, uh, I thought, I was like, I thought we said every other year, but this, I understand why. This makes more sense, honestly, so um, thank you for that suggestion.
So, next slide. And I think we're actually on the slide after there. Thank you. Uh, so once you've approved the legislative recommendations for twenty twenty six, we'll report these out in our twenty twenty five annual report um, and work with the Department of Legislative Services to move this forward somewhat in the same way as a traditional departmental bill. It will be the AIB bill. Um, and uh, with that, I, I stand for questions.
All right, is there any questions? I'm not, Joy, thank you very much, Ms. Schaefer. I really appreciate your presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item.
Does this require a, a board approval or not, these?
Oh, we did have a motion, actually.
Yes, that's right, yeah. One, read the motion.
Yes, give me one second. Let's see. Uh, okay, the motion is to approve the legislative proposals listed in the twenty twenty six session recommended legislative actions as the board's recommendations for the twenty twenty six session of the Maryland General Assembly. Uh, and then uh, the motion highlights the items that uh, we have just reviewed and, and specifies those items excluding those uh, additional considerations or other considerations, those items on that slide.
Okay, the motion so read, I so recommend, they're second to the motion, while legislative agenda and actions for today.
I'll second it.
They're moved and properly seconded. Okay, any unreadiness? Here on a CNN, we're now calling the motion. All in favor of the legislative recommendation for this year, twenty twenty six? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any unreadiness? I'm sorry, any opposition? CNN, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to the next item, which is the um, current technical education vision aligned with the blueprint. And uh, Vice Chair Kerwin is going to lead this discussion.
Okay, so I think uh, you will remember that uh, back in the a joint board meeting with MSDE, I think it was in September, there was uh, an agreement that um, to really get more focused and um, uh, develop more um, action around uh, CTE, that we needed um, uh, a vision statement for CTE that would be aligned with the blueprint. So that was uh, an agreement that we made as AIB with uh, the, the State Board. Um, and so um, some representatives, Rachel and I from uh, AIB, um, uh, Josh Michael and Carrie Wright from MSDE, uh, representatives of the Labor Department and uh, from the CTE Committee um, came together over a number of sessions um, to hammer out this joint vision, vision statement. And um, that um, uh, it went through multiple iterations. Um, but finally, we got to a version that uh, everyone uh, felt supportive of. Uh, you will note that it, it uh, incorporates um, a sentiment that um, registered apprenticeships are the gold standard. Uh, there are two ways in which we can move toward this goal of having uh, forty-five percent of high school graduates have either a registered apprenticeship or go through a, a, a pro, a school-based program that has an industry-certified uh, credential. And um, so uh, the, 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 the vision statement incorporates sort of an interim goal that uh, by um, I think it's the year twenty thirty one, is that right? Executive Director Heiss?
Yes, correct.
Thirty one, that we will uh, have significantly increased the number of registered apprenticeships, the numbers there in the vision statement. And um, uh, after a considerable discussion, uh, all have agree, agreed, including the Labor Department, who will have the main responsibility for creating these registered apprenticeships, uh, that this is an interim target uh, to get us moving towards uh, this very ambitious, ambitious goal. So um, uh, as I say, after a lot of back and forth, we've arrived at this uh, vision statement. And um, it's now before um, the AIB, it will also go to the State Board um, and to this CTE Committee. Uh, I guess Labor uh, just can approve it on its own. Um, and uh, this would be the vision statement, and there's an assumption that assuming the vision statement is approved, uh, that uh, a, a group will come together to uh, uh, develop an implementation plan uh, to uh, realize uh, this vision. So that's the, the, the history of this document, and I think it's now before us Executive Director Heiss for approval. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Thank you very much um, for doing that.
You were at the heart of all of this, so you may want to add a few comments.
Uh, no, I was just gonna say, I think uh, and um, the vision statement is um, is posted, and it's also on the screen here. Um, you know, I think that it does a good job of reflecting both the, the purpose of the changes that the blueprint calls for for our students to be college and career-ready and to be prepared for um, to be successful in, in whatever path they choose and to provide more opportunities for students to choose uh, apprenticeship pathways.
I, 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 incidentally, I failed to mention that, and I should have, should not have, that a very important player in the work group um, developing this vision statement was Senator uh, Jim, uh, Jim Rosepip, who of course is a champion of this uh, CTE provision in the blueprint.
Yes, um, indeed. And so um, I think, I'm just looking, I don't, does anyone have any, oh, Member Werner?
Yes, um, thank you, um, and thank you, Dr. Kerwin, for this. I, I just, um, I wanted to know if there's any updates with the um, the Labor Department regarding um, the availability of registered apprenticeships, because I, I do know that when we met um, in our joint meeting with MSDE, Mr. Kincaid had um, presented some really um, staggering numbers when it came to what's available in our workforce. Um, and, and how we're going to, how, how that's going to be a partnership in, in making these um, registered apprenticeship opportunities accessible, especially in our, our rural areas.
Yeah, well, you, you've raised a very good question, and this was a major source of a discussion uh, within the work group. And um, uh, so the Labor Department was tasked with uh, uh, going back and doing analysis and looking what's avail, what, what other states are doing to get uh, a handle on what would be a reasonable number. And uh, they came back with a, with a proposal that they uh, felt could be accomplished, perhaps a stretch goal. And um, uh, after uh, some discussion uh, with the full group, that number was revised uh, upwardly. Uh, but uh, in, in the end, uh, the Labor Department did buy into this, uh, to this number. To be honest with you, I don't think we had a, a significant Um, to be honest with you, I don't think we had a a significant discussion about rural districts and uh apprenticeships. And I realize they will be much harder to achieve in 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 rural rural districts. And um, I mean, the good news is, nobody's expecting that 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 the forty-five percent will be entirely made up of uh people with registered apprenticeships. There is this other um option for meeting the the forty-five percent goal. But uh the, to answer your your initial question, the Labor Department has has agreed that uh this interim target is one that they will um attempt to meet.
And can I also add that um that the what was discussed is that the that it doesn't make sense for individual LEAs uh to be uh they don't have the capacity and uh or the employers um across the state to, you know, recruit their own apprenticeship sponsors. Um, although to the extent that that they're able to do that, that's certainly going to be helpful for students. But um, you know, recognizing that the the recruitment of employers and the creation of the apprenticeship opportunities was um was, you know, really falls more in the in the state's role across the state to recruit employers to offer apprenticeships.
I'm glad you mentioned that because uh, you know, there is, I think the LEAs were concerned that maybe they were supposed to be out there uh getting, creating these apprenticeships. And I think one of the valuable things about the vision state is vision statement, it it'll it align, it it assigns responsibilities to various, the various uh players in this effort. Uh, the Labor Department is responsible for generating the uh the apprenticeships. The the and then MSD has an assigned responsibility, and AIB is sort of has the role of monitoring uh progress uh toward toward the ultimate goal. But there's a clear delineation of who's supposed to be do what, and I think that is a a valuable component of this uh vision statement.
And Vice Chair Kerwin, I may have missed it, but you also, did you mention the next steps?
Yes, that we were, uh, this was to lead to the um the the implementers, primarily MSD and the Labor Department, uh to develop a plan uh that will uh begin to move us towards this vision.
Member Werner, did you have another question?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I, there is one thing else, I, one other thing I wanted to bring up with this, because I I know that um Vice Chair Kerwin brought up a a good point that there's multiple ways to to achieve the forty-five percent in the um industry-recognized credentials are a way uh to that goal. And I know that all of our LEAs are are working on aligning um CTE programs to IRCs and um and the MSD has led um that charge with with making that alignment. But I think that's one thing for this board to be aware of, is that there's a cost difference when it comes to um a student in an apprenticeship versus a student who um is receiving IRCs um that an apprenticeship might not cost a district uh much other than travel, which in many cases, sometimes these students um do get to their apprenticeship on their own. Um, where an IRC falls on the LEA. So I I do think that it's something that when we do have that data of um breaking it down of how close um LEAs are to achieving that forty-five percent, and then looking at how that is um broken up between IRCs and apprenticeships of also examining the cost with that, because some of these new IRCs that have been added are um are very expensive. So I just, just for the board's information, when we're we're thinking about this, that there there could be some inequities when it comes to districts that don't have the accessibility of apprenticeships and are looking for um other ways for students to meet that goal, that there could be some cost associated with that that might not be equitable.
Ex- excellent point. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
No.
Okay.
So may I, may I move this?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Is that our five move this?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I make a move that mo- move that we uh the AIB uh uh endorse this um uh vision statement.
All right, I second, I second it. Okay, any questions unreadness on the motion for the mission statement? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 In a opposition, here and none, the motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next and last agenda item is um the Executive Director's Report. And for that, uh, I will, we're going to share the screen. And um the first item is a staffing update, which um I kind of already um I already kind of spilled the beans here, that um we did want to, you know, publicly announce that our new Deputy Director of Operations is Alexandra Vernon. Um, Alex has been our Finance Director for um several years, three years, I believe, maybe more than that. Sorry, what was that?
Oh, I just said three.
Okay, three years, thank you. Um, and um, you know, has done an amazing job, and with our vacancy, with the um early retirement of our former Deputy Director, I am super pleased to promote Alex into this position. She will, uh, she has been serving as interim Deputy Director as well as Finance Director since um, you know, since before January, when um when Leland retired. Um, but uh, and I should say she will uh in her new role continue to serve as Finance Director until um we are able to fill that position. And you can see that um that, so that leaves us with two remaining positions to fill, one of which is the Finance Director. Previously, it was the Deputy Director, so we've just kind of done a swap there. And in addition, um, we do have the uh Fiscal Administrator slash Office Manager position um that we are uh going to be filling um very soon, which is in process.
Okay.
Alex, was there anything else on the staffing update, as the Deputy Director is also responsible for human resources?
Uh, no, no, that is it. Um.
Okay. We can move on to finance update, and I will, I will turn it over to Alex.
Yeah, this will be a quick and positive uh technical assistance grants. Uh, we did have our quarterly status reports and invoices for um period, uh, performance period, July to September, due on October fifteenth, and they are currently in review status um and processing uh those invoices. And then for office space, uh, we did get approval by the City of Annapolis for our construction permit. Our uh landlord received bids for construction on October fourteenth, and DGS requested the best and final offers uh which are currently in review. So the next steps for this, um, once the it's, we're actually in construction status, um, DGS and AIB will meet bi-weekly on and off-site for progress updates. Um, they have seventy-five calendar days to achieve substantial completion from the notice-to-proceed date, which also includes scheduling and coordinating um the vendors. And then they'll have um sixty days, calendar days, from the actual physical start date once we have um, you know, the launch date for uh construction. So projected move-in date is February still, however, that's pretty tight. So um somewhere towards the end of February and the beginning of March is is kind of where we're estimating.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, uh, on the reports update, uh, it's very quick. There were no reports due uh to us this month, uh, so there is nothing to report. Um, next up is Outreach and Communications, and Arshia Sethi Snowden.
Hi, everyone. Um, so just some quick updates with Outreach and Communications. Um, as I think everyone knows, our new website is live, and as we shared earlier, um, we have officially launched the data dashboards. You can access those on our website. Um, there's also an easy way from the homepage to be able to access those as well. Um, and we appreciate the feedback we've gotten so far on the website, and we will be continuing to make updates, so please keep that feedback coming as well. Um, as far as our AIB updates go, we are still sending those out, um, and we have in the past month, started sending out a second one per month, which is our highlight update. Um, if you missed it, this one featured some information and some images, as well as some really exciting um on-the-ground uh updates from Worcester County as part of our visit um with the General Assembly House of Delegates Ways and Means Committee um at the end of October. We also highlighted um a talk that, or a keynote that Vice Chair Kerwin gave at the Literacy Summit over the summer, um, as well as some other exciting on-the-ground updates. So if you are not um subscribed to our AIB updates, we highly encourage that. And um you can also access previous updates on our website under the Outreach menu. We're also working on some updated branding materials, so we have a little bit of some refreshes coming to our um letterhead, um, our meeting agendas, slide decks, logo, so we will be debuting uh those soon. And then, just as a last note, we are still working on our LEA and statewide one-pagers. Um, we are hoping to release those in the coming weeks and months. Um, and we will be um providing those both in meetings and numerous different ways when those are live. So those are the Outreach and Communications updates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then, last but not least, is um our Government Relations Update and Joy Schaefer.
So in addition to the general outreach to prepare for the upcoming session, uh, we participated in some really exciting events, and um um our our she had went over a couple of them. The first was to see uh that some very two successful programs in Worcester County public schools to uh connected to achieving blueprint outcomes for students. Um, Ways and Means uh Committee Chair uh uh Delegate Vanessa Atterbury asked if we could provide an opportunity to showcase blueprint in action um to cap off their fall retreats. So we were able to tour two really successful and um very um successfully student-serving programs. Um, uh, and um, and I want to thank um member Quick McQueen for um representing the AIB at that event um very well um and making the trek out there, but we greatly appreciated that. Um, and um, and then just uh uh just to highlight the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Annual Conference um where uh the Chair, thank you very much to the Chair, um, and um Executive Director Heiss uh led a workshop on um steering through the storm, leveraging the blueprint to keep students' success at the center. And then, um, as mentioned by Arshia, um, the very recent um uh Maryland Assessment Group Annual Conference, just this past Tuesday. Uh, I think uh the Vice Chair's keynote uh was very well received, I heard. So um we represented well there, as well as um uh Rachel Amstutz um presented two workshops uh which were very well-retended, so um, that was, that was very beneficial to us. And then lastly, we we did um meet um uh with uh the Public uh School Superintendent's Associate Association of Maryland, or PZAM, um at their fall retreat uh at the end of October.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that um that completes our um our agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, and thank everyone for all the work that you've accomplished here so far. I think there's a motion for us now to go into administrative.
To adjourn, to adjourn, a motion to adjourn.
Right. Okay, the motion?
So moved.
I second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Now, in opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you.
And when will we come into the administrative function?